Everyone, and welcome to our City Council Evening. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Bozen?
Here.
Mr. Nichols?
Here.
Mr. Childs?
Here.
Mr. Greider?
Here.
Ms. Wilder?
Here.
And Mr. Feis.
Here.
All right, and you will notice we have an empty chair. Tomorrow is March 7th, and it is the special election for the Fourth Ward election. And so there are two people that are running for that election within the Fourth Ward, and that is Pastor Belinda Creighton Smith and Pastor Lawrence Marshall as well. So please encourage all of your Fourth Ward friends, relatives, to get out and vote tomorrow, as well as an important Hawkeye Community College bond referendum vote. And that is not an increase of new dollars. That is the continuation of a bond that's expiring, referendum that's expiring for improved facilities, programming for students as well, so very important. So please get out and support and encourage those to vote. Now could you please all join me in a moment of silence? All right, thank you. Would you please join us in the pledge, which will be led by Ward Three Council Member, Nia Wilder?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed, as well as the minutes of the February 20th, 2023 regular session as proposed.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda, and the first item is a proclamation declaring March 7th, 2023 as Pastor Thad F. Thomas Day. And I think I see Mr. Robert Thomas. Is there anyone else that's going to join us? Mr. Thomas? Well, come on, brother.
I've got my sister with me as well. Well, come on, sister.
That's GB right there.
And your auntie. Come on, auntie.
I've got sisters, I've got a brother-in-law.
Whoever wants to come up, please. They have their orders.
No, that's right.
I've got my pastor with me as well.
Come on, pastor.
I'm sorry.
Greetings, Pastor. All right, City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation. Whereas the late Reverend Dr. Thad F. Thomas was born March 7th, 1936, and whereas Pastor Thomas was joined in holy matrimony to Ms. Elmae Thomas in the year 1959, and to this union were born four children, Betty Greer, Thad Ford Thomas Jr., Pastor Percy F. Thomas, and Robert Thomas. Whereas Pastor Thomas accepted the call to gospel ministry in 1970 and became the pastor of Mount Carmel Missionary Baptist Church in 1974, where he served 33 years. And whereas Pastor Thomas was a significant part of the East Side Minister Alliance and a past participant of the West Side Pastors Association, he was one of the first black pastors for the Allen Memorial Hospital Chaplain's Ministry. He also began the Prayer on the Air broadcast program for KBBG Radio. Pastor Thomas also was a politically involved pastor, hosting many statewide and city-elected officials and presidential candidates. And whereas Pastor Thomas served as a head of the Mount Village Elderly and Handicap Housing Units, his vision was to help the low-income, handicapped, and disabled have a home in which they would not deplete their monthly income to have a residence to live in. He also was instrumental in the community feeding, which he provided free of charge, and whereas Pastor Thomas' memory and contribution to the City of Waterloo will leave an everlasting impression for generations to come. Now therefore, I, Quinton Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, March 7th, 2023, as Pastor Thad Thomas Day.
Thank you, Brother Mayor and council members. Thank you so much. We certainly appreciate this honor from my father. My mom really wishes she could be here. She's getting up in age and wasn't feeling the greatest, but she wanted to make sure that we had representation here. So I'm so thankful for my aunts, my uncles, my brothers, my sisters, my church members, my pastors, and all that came out to help us celebrate in this great occasion. And I do appreciate our mayor for recognizing my father. Thank you so much.
Your father was a heavyweight in this community, and he didn't just touch people locally. He touched people all throughout the United States. And when you're talking about bringing people here that are impacting policy and change for our community, he was right there on the front lines. And, you know, looking at yourselves and your siblings, the apple hasn't fallen too far from the tree. So we thank you all for your contributions that you're making in his spirit, and we thank you, Pastor of Mount Carmel as well, and we appreciate all your efforts. So I guess I can say God bless, right? All right, thank you. You're in trouble when the mayor's giving out blessings. You're more than welcome to hang around. You gotta go eat. All right, thank you. It is now time for oral comments. It's your opportunity to address the City Council on non-agenda-related items. I know there are many of you to speak to a particular item on the agenda, but this time is for non-agenda-related items. So if you have something that you want to let the council know, and mayor, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and we will hear you.
Hi, I'd like to address in general the suspension of the rules to pass second and third readings concurrently. My name is Jacob Taylor.
That's about an agenda item, right?
No, just in general.
Second and third reading, just overall?
Just overall. General, yes, sir. Jacob Taylor, 566 Sheridan Road. Can we put the clock on now at 3:00? Thank you very much. Two weeks ago, I attended my first City Council meeting. One of the things that surprised me is how frequently you suspend the rules to pass second and third readings concurrently. I'm a product engineer at John Deere. I understand the expediency. I understand the need to keep things moving. I even understand that you might not always be able to gauge public opinion and what would pique public interest. And I know you like to give yourselves the option to keep the ball rolling. However, there are issues that you know full well the public will want to discuss, and it is merited. By including the rule suspension on these, even though it's within your legal purview, you are giving the impression that you are ramming an item through. And this stifles democracy, and it also doesn't allow passions to run their natural course. America is a republican form of government, small r, but as we drill down to the local level, we become increasingly more democratic. Here at the City Council level, public opinion and input becomes more important. Why do we have three hearings? I have a friend, she has three boys under the age of five. Her hands are pretty full. Her husband works second shift. You know how hard it is for her to make a meeting here at 5:30 on a Monday? That's one of the reasons we have three hearings. Additionally, on controversial issues, when you pit two passionate groups against each other, it creates heat. Without due discussion, this heat is not allowed to reach any form of resolution. I've sat in meetings such as this and had people accuse my side of being hateful. Limiting us to three minutes instead of five, or one hearing instead of three, many of us have to stick to our more rigid points. We're not able to show that while we believe a higher natural moral order should govern society, we also exude compassion. These two ideas are not mutually exclusive. I think of the life of Jesus. He never took sin lightly. On the contrary, he preached that hate is murder, looking lustfully is adultery. He didn't lower the bar, he raised it. In his last day, while he was hanging from the cross and people were ridiculing him, he showed compassion for them. While it didn't negate their wrongdoing, it shows a picture of a God who loves, not hates, and is ready with open arms to forgive those who repent and turn. It's thoughts like these that discussion needs, not just the rest of it. So I would implore you to reconsider your suspension of the rules for issues where there's going to need to be a lot of public discussion. Better to endure the formality than look like you're trying to ram something through.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Hodges-Harman, and I'm the Executive Director for the Jesse Cosby Center. This is one of the members of the board. And on Saturday, we had an opportunity to celebrate our 56th year here in this community. And I wanted to publicly come out and thank Mayor Quinton Hart for all that he did for us on Saturday. Our mayor, he always says, "Other people have a servant's heart." Well, he too has a servant's heart, especially when it comes to the nonprofit organizations in this community. But I was very proud and very humbled to call you my mayor. So thank you. Thank you for your service, and clean up, too.
I was here last week.
You're not recognized yet? Could you? We just had a conversation. Could you please remove your?
1205 and 1/2 Bishop Street.
Could you please remove your hat when you address the podium? Please?
There's been five other people here that have appeared in the last two years with their hat on, that you didn't request them to take their hat off.
Point of order, you are not recognized.
I'm here to say the same thing I said last week.
Point of order, you are not recognized.
I've been recognized before by you.
Point of order, you are not recognized at this moment.
Nobody has done nothing on the property and the street over on the.
Point of order, we do not recognize you as a speaker.
I have three minutes to speak, and I will speak.
The presider of the meeting, which is me, which is vested by the citizens, is in charge of the meeting. And right now, you are not recognized as a speaker.
I'm not recognized because I don't dress the way you want?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to take a recess due to the fact that we can't continue when there's an unrecognized speaker at the podium.
You've done absolutely nothing on this ground over there.
Motion's been made with the second unrecognized speaker. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have a short recess. Motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Still oral comments time. Your opportunity to speak to non-agenda-related items. Please state your name and address for the record, and let us know your thoughts.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Al Manning, 1020 South Hill Drive. Welcome back, Mr. Mayor. Good to see you again. I was reading an ordinance over the weekend, and I had a couple of questions for you. This is ordinance 5662, which was passed in September of last year. And one of the points in the ordinance says council members shall only have the floor for a maximum of three minutes each time they have the floor. Council members may request time in addition to the allotted three minutes. Such requests for additional time shall be made to the presiding officer and granted at the presiding officer's discretion. So I guess my question is, are there timers for the council members, or how is that determined? Because I know at the last meeting, there was at least one council member that went way over almost 10 minutes, 9 minutes and 41 seconds to be exact. And so I'm just curious to know whether that is enforced. And then I have another thing that I want to address, and then you can answer that afterwards if you want. Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay, so you won't eat up my three minutes. Another part of the ordinance that I was reading said, "Accepting a position as elected official or appointed member of a governmental body of the City of Waterloo carries with it the acceptance of trust placed on that individual by the public to strive to further the interests of all citizens and operate an effective government." Okay, and then also, "Conduct of members. Members shall treat the public, city employees, and fellow members in a respectful manner. During and outside of meetings of a governmental body, members shall strive to discuss city business in an informed and factual manner." And the reason I bring that up, and I kind of hate to, I hesitated to bring this up because I don't want to start the meeting on a sour note, but it might already be too late for that, is that, I'm not going to name any names, but there were a couple of public posts on one of the council members' council Facebook pages, one accusing citizens of expressing hate, and the other one of trying to recruit people to come down to speak to one side of an issue. And I think that that's not only disrespectful, but divisive and untrue that we were speaking with hate. And I just think that citizens of Waterloo neglect council members to be a legislative body and not community organizers. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Just really quickly on the first point, you know, good question. What we do if a person has put together a proclamation, a resolution, or an ordinance and is the sponsor, we would naturally give that person more time to be able to explain what's being placed on the agenda. So I don't know, I wasn't here last week. I'm assuming that's what you may be talking about. Was it to a particular issue? Okay, then if it was the sponsor of that, then we allow additional time as well. Thank you. Right, is there anyone else that has some public comments for us going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to close the public hearing.
Second.
The motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comments closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of 1A1 bills payment for the amount on Monday, February 27th, for the amount of $1,158,350.86. And for March 6th, 2023, in the amount of $2,635,952.36.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote for the consent agenda. Oops.
Put the motion in second.
Councilman Feis had the motion, and who had the second?
Nia.
Thank you, sorry about that. Okay, you're able to vote now.
You can vote now. All right, we have yeses. The consent agenda is approved unanimously, 6-0. All right, next, let's go to, are there any appointments on here?
Yes.
There's three appointments to the Historic Preservation Commission, Jared Haddell, to the Highway 218 Design Review Board. We have Corey Cardy and Gina Jordan-Berg. Are any of you three in the audience today? All right, well, if you are in Cyberland listening, we want to say congratulations and thank you so much for stepping up to be involved, right? And we also have an appointment, a combination, too, for building inspections, Bradley Baldwin. Bradley, are you here? All right, well Bradley, if you are listening, we want to thank you. All right, well Bradley, if you are listening, we want to thank you so much for joining the City of Waterloo family and we look forward to a long and great, uh, working relationship. All right, uh, we are at public hearings and we have quite a number of public hearings this evening, uh, for everyone here, uh, but could someone take number one, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing as for general obligation bonds, ECP dash one, the issuance of not to exceed $4,700,000 general obligation bonds for central corporate purposes.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hea, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to, um, the issuance of, uh, general obligations bonds going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
Like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
Like to pass a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel? Madam Clerk? Uh, counsel, it's a roll call vote. All right, we have, uh, six, oh, yes, to move that forward, as you can see. Um, can I ask you a question? These are, um, about our bonds. Is it possible to take two, three, and four, uh, together and people can ask individual questions or the counsel?
Um, sure, we can do that. If you want to, um, if you want to make a motion to open the hearing and then take public comment, close the hearing, and then approve those resolutions as a group?
Would we have to open the hearing separately for each? Or for all at once?
Let's just go, listen, we'll, we'll work it out. Number two, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing. That is for general obligation bonds, GCP dash two, the issuance of not to, of not to exceed $700,000 in general obligation bonds for general corporate purposes. Also, uh, for, uh, general obligation bonds, GCP.
Just, no.
No, just two, okay.
So that's number two for GCP two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to our, uh, GCP two, uh, general obligations bonds going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive, uh, close hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed. Adopt a resolution.
Oh, sorry, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution instituting proceedings to take action.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? Madam Clerk, uh, roll call vote, everyone? All right, for that one, as you see, we have, uh, six, zero vote for the issuance of GCP two. Could someone take number three, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive file proof of publication and of notice of public hearing as for general obligation bonds, GCP three, the issuance of not to exceed $700,000 general obligation bonds for general corporate purposes.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the, um, Jim, general obligations bond, uh, three going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
Like to make a motion to close hearing and receive and file oral and written comments?
Yeah, this is a closed one. All right, can we get a second? That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution instituting proceedings and taking additional, and take additional, to take additional action.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Uh, counsel, questions? Madam Clerk and counsel, uh, roll call vote. Right, that is passed and carried six, zero, roll call vote. Uh, number four, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Bowden.
I'd like to make a motion to receive file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for general obligation bonds, GCP four, the issuance of not to exceed $700,000 general obligation bonds for general corporate purposes.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the issuance of the general bonds, uh, four going a second time?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Hearing closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? Uh, it's now time for a roll call vote. Counsel? All right, that carried six, zero. All right, all right, so, uh, that's it for our, uh, general bonds. Could someone take number five, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing and that's for the proposed allocation plan for home American Rescue Plan.
Second.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the American Rescue Plan and, uh, funds for homelessness going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the proposed allocation plan submitted by the Waterloo Cedar Falls Consortium for Home American Rescue Plan Programs Funds in the amount of $1,780,793,000, seventy, uh, $793,000 to assist individuals or households who are experiencing homelessness, at risk of homelessness, and other vulnerable populations.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
Not a question. I just wanted to, to mention out to the public that if they have the opportunity to get on our website and look at the plan and see how detailed this plan is and how many people are going to help, I, I think it's really important, you know, for them to do that. It's, if there's a ton of information in there.
Yeah, thank you. All right, um, Madam Clerk, uh, roll call vote, counsel. And that plan passed, uh, carried six, zero to support the, uh, American Rescue Plan efforts. Uh, number six was canceled. Uh, we didn't receive any bids for the airplane passenger terminal building, so, uh, we'll go back to the drawing board. Uh, number seven, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing, and that's for fiscal year 2023 Airport CCTV project for the airline passenger terminal building, Federal Aviation Administration Airport Improvement Program, project number three dash one nine dash zero zero nine four dash zero zero five four.
Second.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, opposed? Uh, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the CCTV project for the airline passenger terminal building going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming, confirming approval of plan specifications, form of contract, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second and another second. Um, uh, counsel, questions? All right, uh, roll call vote, counsel. All right, that, uh, carried six, oh, for the confirming of the approval and plans.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and instruct city clerk to read bids.
Second.
That motion was made with the second to read the bids. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Having a hard time getting there.
Uh, bid tabulations. There you go.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
Right there?
Yeah.
All right, the bids for, uh, this project.
All right. This looks like I'm, hmm. Okay. Okay, we had two bidders, or excuse me, we had one, this is weird. We had one bidder. It was KNW Electric. Their total bid amount for, okay. Sarah. This looks like it's itemized out. Okay.
So, hey, David, it looks like the, the bid estimate, uh, for this project was 178,000 and that was with the alternate KNW Electric, which was the only bidder, had their 5% bid bond and their total base bid plus alternate was 164,500 dollars.
Thanks, thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a, uh, adopt a resolution approving award of bid to KNW Electric, Inc. of Cedar Falls, Iowa, in the amount of, uh, 164,500 dollars, approving the contract bonds and certificate of insurance in conjunction with the fiscal year 2023 Airport CCTV project for the airline passenger terminal building, Federal Aviation Administration Airport Improvement Program, project number three dash one nine dash zero zero nine four dash zero zero five four, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? Roll call vote, please, counsel. All right, that, uh, vote for, uh, the KNW Electric was carried six, zero, uh, in support of that project. Uh, could someone do number eight, please? Can someone do?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Bowden.
I'd like to make a motion to receive file proof of publication, notice of public hearing, sale and conveyance of city-owned property of 514 Johnson Street in the amount of $210,000 to do Israel, I'm going to really mess this up.
Kabango.
Kabango, thank you.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item, uh, on the agenda going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution accepting a deed from Hawkeye Community College for a home located at 514 Johnson Street in the amount of 164,500 dollars per the project addendum agreement previously approved on April 5th, 2021, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? Counsel, um, roll call vote on that resolution? All right, that passed unanimously, six, zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located at 514 Johnson Street in the amount of $210,000 to do Israel Kabango with up to $11,000 in closing costs to be paid by the City of Waterloo and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Um, and I just want to say, for those that may wonder about this that's watching or here now, uh, several years ago, we started a project with Hawkeye Community College to be able to take blighted properties, uh, and be able to put, uh, new housing, uh, on those, uh, particular areas. And, you know, we started out on, uh, Newell Street and there were three houses, uh, that were basically abandoned. And, uh, today, I think, just in that small block, we were able to work with Hawkeye to put over, was it, four, close to $400,000 of taxable value right on that lots and new homes. So, uh, incredible partnership with Hawkeye and there's a bond referendum vote tomorrow. But, uh, counsel, uh, counsel, please, uh, please vote on this item. Mr. Childs? Okay, thank you. Uh, that carried unanimously, so, uh, congratulations for all involved in that project. All right, uh, that was a lot of public hearings. Uh, things will speed up from here, uh, in an informative way. Uh, could someone take, uh, one, two, and three for us? Mr. Mayor? Mr. Nichols?
I'd like, uh, adopt the following resolutions. The first one is a resolution approving the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board Recommendations for Funding, uh, two hotel motel mini grant applications for the Iowa Senior Softball Open and the Blue Suede Memories XL Trade Show in the amount of $5,400. Number two, a resolution approving a variance to the requirements of the subdivision ordinance in section 11 dash three dash four, signing and recording of plats relating to the recording of Southland Park Edition, uh, Sethup Park Sixth Edition. Final plat exceeding the nine months requirement from the date of city council approval located southeast of 2950 Southland Drive. And number three, a resolution approving a quest by, um, Clap Saddle Garber Associates, Inc., on behalf of Chris officials for the preliminary, preliminary plat of San Martin Business Park in the R dash four, R dash P Plan Multiple Residence District in, um, B dash P Business Park Districts located west of 4041 Hurst Drive.
Second.
All right. Right, that motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone that have, uh, any comments about these three items on the agenda going a second time? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I just had a question for Noel because I, I think the original, uh, was approved October 18th of 2021. Maybe he could give us a heads up on, on what happened here and what caused the delay.
Mr. Anderson?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. Um, the Southland Park one was platted at that time. Um, honestly, they did everything properly in the design of it and the approval of it. They just never recorded the plat, uh, with the Black Hood County Recorder's Office. Um, so by the subdivision ordinance, they have to come back to counsel to reapprove it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And then I, just quickly on number one, I think I heard a stat that, uh, the City of Waterloo sees over 700,000 plus visitors per year for conventions and programming as well, so I wanted to make that note. Uh, counsel, it is time for a roll call vote on, uh, one, two, and three, please. Let us know. All right, that unanimously was approved and carried six, zero. Uh, could someone take, uh, four, five, and six, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Foyce?
Like, excuse me, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a variance to the requirements of the subdivision ordinance in section 11 dash three dash three, roughly these D application procedure and requirements as it relates to the approval of the final plat of San Martin Business Park First Edition. Uh, next is the resolution approving a request by Clap Saddle Garber Associates on behalf of Chris officials for the final plat of San Martin Business Park First Edition in the R four, RP Plan Multi, Multiple Residence District and BP Business Park District located west of 4041 Hurst Drive. And number six is a resolution approving a variance to the requirements of the subdivision ordinance in section 11 dash three dash two, preliminary plats and section 11 dash three dash three final plats relating to the approval of a minor plat of a replat of a portion of Lot 47, a beam addition, a three-lot residential subdivision in the R two, one, and two-family residence district located at 10, uh, 1,001, 1,021, and 1129 Archer Avenue.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Is anyone that'd like to speak to these three items? Counsel? Uh, counsel, uh, roll call vote, please, these three items. All right, those items, uh, passed unanimously, six, zero. Uh, could someone take seven, eight, nine, please? Anyone?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving a request by Mike Cook for a minor plat of a replat of a portion of Lot 47 and them addition, a three-lot residential subdivision in the R two, one, and two-family residence district located at 101, 121, 129 Archer Avenue. Number eight is adopting a resolution approving a variance to the requirements of subdivision ordinance in section 11 dash three dash two D, effective period of preliminary approval relating to the approval of the. relating to the approval of the final plat for North Crossing Third Edition to exceed the twelve-month requirement after the approval of preliminary plat located north of five-on-one Lakeside Street. And number nine is adopting a resolution approving the assignment of rebates to Windigo Property Trust LLC in conjunction with the development agreement with Cedar Valley Warehouse LLC, originally approved September fourth, twenty-twelve, for property located at twenty, twenty-eight thirty Geraldine Road.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to these three particular items? Counsel?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
The only, the only thing I had was, and maybe Noel can explain that, there was this, there was a paperwork that was involved in our, in our packet that he act, that the developer actually signed off on the tax rebates on the twenty-fifth of August on twenty-twenty-one, and we're just seeing it today. Can he just give us an update on what happened there?
Mr. Anderson?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So this property recently sold. They do still have two years of rebates left because they're not actually eligible to get the rebates until they're at their full minimum assessed value. From when they probably closed on the property, I'm imagining that the taxes were prorated, and so now is when they're becoming due, and they probably just never forwarded the paper to it, paperwork to us until now, and so now we're moving ahead.
Okay, thank you. Just, just two more years out of the five is what they're receiving. Okay.
Alright, thank you, thank you. Counsel, roll call vote. Alright, so that passed unanimously, six-o for seven, eight, and nine. Could someone take ten and eleven?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving a development agreement and minimum assessment agreement with Fireworks Leasing LLC for the construction of a sixty-foot by one-hundred-and-twenty-foot, seven-thousand-two-hundred-square-foot retail building with a tax rebate amount of seventy-five percent for years one through two and fifty percent for years three through eight with a minimum assessment of eight-hundred-fi, or... Eight-hundred-fifty thousand, is that what that's supposed to be?
Mm-hmm.
Located at the southeast corner of Kimball Avenue and East Tower Park Drive, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
And at number eleven, a resolution approving a professional services agreement with HR Green in the amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand, six-hundred-fifty dollars to complete soil testing at Gates Park and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Anyone with questions on these two items? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Um, do you know how long it's going to take to reach that minimum assessment for the building?
Uh, Mr. Anderson? How long is it gonna take?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So upon certificate of occupancy, they should be at the minimum assessed value as soon as they're done with the building.
So when the building is complete, sir?
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Childs?
No, thank you.
Alright, Mr. Bozen?
I had, I had a question on the fireworks building, Noel. And I understand that if it's under a million dollars, our normal rebates are fifty percent for five years, and we're moving it to seventy-five percent for the first two years and giving fifty percent for the five years. Can you tell me what you think they'll be generating in property taxes? Per year, what their taxes would be?
We do have a spreadsheet on that. I don't have it with me, but I can get that information too.
Yeah, I was just, I was just trying to balance the two years at seventy-five percent tax abatements based on the difference in what they're gonna do to change the, the look of the building. And the reason I ask is, previously in, in this meeting, when we, when we approved for the area around Tower Park, they actually specify how the buildings have to look. Is there anything in that covenant or in that from, on San Martin, from Kimball to the east that specifies how those buildings should look? Because they're mainly the brick facades and, and... Is there anything in that?
Correct. There was, there was no, no, there was no design restrictions when they have lots were platted originally.
Okay. So that, that, that would explain why they originally applied for a pole building, and we're asking them to, to dress it up a little bit. Okay.
Yes.
And can you get back to me on that, on those taxes, on the spreadsheet? Thank you.
Do we need some design specifics in there?
I think we do.
Do we need to have a, start having a conversation about it?
And we wouldn't have this coming back.
Alright, counsel, it's a roll call vote. Please state your dreadish for ten and eleven. Alright, that was approved unanimously with a six-o vote to move forward with number ten and eleven. Good to see some positive development happening. Number one in our ordinances, could someone take that first one?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive file considering passed for the second time, an ordinance amending the City of Waterloo Code of Ordinances by enacting a new Chapter Twelve Youth Mental Health Protection of Title III Business and License Regulation.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion to postpone this until May first, twenty-twenty-three, please.
Second.
I would second that.
That motion to postpone to May first?
Yep, till May first.
Counsel, questions on that?
No, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Do you want to speak Jonathan first?
No, you can go.
Okay, thank you. And, and I, when, when...
And so, I'm sorry, so right now, what we're doing, Councilman Foyce had made a motion to postpone to May first. So the only conversation that we can have right now is counsel about the postponement. So that's what they're doing right now. So, Mr. Bozen?
Thank you, sir. With everything that's going on in the State House, I, I would like to see it postponed until after the, the state session, legislative session, so that we won't be in violation of something that they may pass. And I really truly believe that we should wait until, until this legislative session is over before we entertain this again.
Alright, Mr. Greider?
Yeah, so I can, I can get that desire, I can get the desire of folks that they don't want to have uncomfortable conversations, that we want to see what the legislature will do, whether it's banning gender-affirming care or allowing adults to deadname kids. I'm sure that we can wait to see what other things that the state legislature will come up with to punish LGBTQ youth for, you know, the crime of being born. That being said, I don't think that we as leaders have the option to wait. Because it is clear that in our community that folks want this. It is clear in our community that these practices are happening. It is clear that in our community, we need to have this conversation, and we need to face it full on. I oppose postponing it because we as leaders have a duty to stand up for our constituents, especially the most marginalized, and those are the, are regularly oppressed by other people who have power.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
So, I, like probably all of our current counsel, have gotten a lot of emails and phone calls and had conversations with many people, probably a lot of you sitting in the audi, audience, excuse me. And I'm, I'm gonna disagree just a little bit with counsel. Councilman Greider on it's clear, it isn't clear. What is clear is that people do want to support LGBTQ plus individuals in our city. However, there is some unclearness around what this ordinance is going to do. And as I've told people, my job as a councilperson is when I take a vote, I have to be absolutely sure I can, I can speak to my vote. Right now, there are some concerns that I have. There are some concerns that have been expressed to me by, and I will tell you, adamantly opposed to conversion therapy people. However, they are still not sure what this is going to do, and that's why I'm asking for the postponement. Yes, I'm asking for the hope, I believe, that the legislature will be done by then. And they're going to pass the laws, it's very clear with the Republican majority, that they're going to continue to throw out hateful, and I will use that word, LGBTQ plus legislation. What we need to do here in Waterloo is make it a welcoming place. But we have to do so in a way that doesn't put us at a liability. And I know that's very difficult for some people, but that's why I'm asking for the postponement.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, and so... I'll just start with this. I received a call today from a lady, and she said, hey, I'm just calling because I want you to vote against the ban on counselors being able to tell youth the consequences and risks of gender reassignment surgery. And that's not what we were here to talk about. And so when I told her what we were actually doing, she said, wow, I have a grandchild that identifies LGBTQ plus, and I would be crushed if anything like this happened to them. And I said, so, that, I broke it down to her because I want her to understand the amount of misinformation that is being spread in our community. This is not to undermine parents or anything like that. This is specifically to protect youth. And so I want to make sure that when we do this, our language is clear so that when people read over the ordinance, they don't call saying they want me to denounce something that's not happening. Because she hadn't even read the ordinance. She went off a message she received, and it was completely false information. So I just want to make sure that when we do this, there can be no false information spread, and we're not getting phone calls to not do something that we're not doing anyway.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. First, do you have anything, sir?
Yep, and, and so just, you know, as far as when, when we're talking about the, the definition, and I'm speaking in support of this, of this ban, just to lay it out, the, the definition that it, that we, that it gives here in the ordinance is...
Remember, we're speaking to the postponement.
For the postponement.
The urgency of the postponement, do we wait or do we not? So please proceed, but remember, it's about the postponement right now.
I'll go ahead and suspend my time if you... Because it's not related to the postponement.
It's to the actual?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Before we go to Mr. Greider, give everyone a chance. Mr. Childs, are you good?
I'm good.
Alright, Mr. Greider?
Mr. Mayor, I, I guess, I, I don't, I get what my colleagues are saying, but I guess what is giving folks who are willing to lie two more months going to clear the air? I've received multiple messages that I want to kill children. I've received multiple messages that I should kill myself and my family for what I believe in. Why do we think that in two months, any of this is going to disappear? I'm looking at a post that was posted in the last forty-eight hours that the council, if it has its way, children who experience unwanted sexual or gender confusion will be forced to undergo treatment that worsens their confusion and puts their mental slash physical health at risk. Bring another one that says, stop groomer Greider's wokest agenda in Waterloo. I bring another one that says banning conversion therapy is a violation of people's rights, but not the rights of children who are being, you know, abused, the, the rights of other folks. So I guess I'm confused. What's to stop these people from still lying?
So, so the...
What's to stop these people from spreading truths that put our children at risk? There isn't one. And I get that folks are nervous. I get that folks want to make sure that we're clear. That's our job. But from start to finish, this process will take eight weeks. We have a bunch of people here. I'm sure that they have many things to say to us. They have our emails, they have our phone numbers, they have been more than happy to give me calls. What this legislation does is none of the things that these folks are saying, and by postponing it, we are only giving those folks more oxygen to prevent this from happening and to protect our children.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, yes, sir. So then, what we need to do as counsel is counter the misinformation with the right information. And that's what I'm hearing from people, is that they don't have all of the right information right now. So I think as soon as possible, the, the people sit down, you, me, you know, any other council people, you know, let fewer than, you know, three or fewer get together and, and spread that. Because I think, as I've talked to people, and I think I heard that's what I heard from Ms. Wilder as well, is there's a lot of misinformation, and how you counter misinformation is with the truth. We have to make sure the truth is, is clear. And I think for some people, it isn't clear.
Alright.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
One more question. Is there a way, is there a way that we can go into the ordinance and revisit the language so that it definitely bans conversion therapy? And, like, is there a way that we can go back and revisit the language so that we can still do this?
Any, right now, any changes... So first, to the postponement, which we'll take after this, but any changes after you've already voted one time, you know, to, for the first reading? Any changes, you have to start all over again. You can't, because, because we already approved one. You can't come back and make a, an amendment to it because that leaves that first reading in and of it by itself. And so if there is...
Finish out this process and start a new one.
Uh, you finish out the process, you, you may have to strike it down or whatever it is. But you may have to restart again if there are changes to it as well. So I'm hearing folks, folks want to do something but need a little more time. Some, like, the urgency is now, and some, like, let's get more information. So we have a postponement on here to...
May first, please.
May first. Uh, Madam Clerk?
No, can I ask one other question? Sorry, Mr. Mayor. If somebody did make changes, and we could bring this up before May first, correct? With proper notification? Or would it have to be indefinite? Sorry.
I think if you revised the ordinance, we could do a work session prior to May first.
Okay.
But you will have to still take up this ordinance as it stands now on May first.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Right, so for the postponement to May first, counsel, we'll make sure for those that are sitting out there who knows who and how you voted. So for the postponement?
It's the one that's up, Mayor, it's the one that's up now, that's for the postponement.
Yeah, how do you get to that? Should I just do a, since it's not up there, should I just...
Um, the motion to postpone is what's available for counsel to vote on currently.
I can't see that, yeah. Okay, alright, so, so a vote of yes would be to postpone, a vote of no would be not to postpone?
Correct.
Alright. And we have, so we have four yeses to postpone. Mr. Bozen, Mr. Childs, Ms. Wilder, and Mr. Foyce. And we have two not to postpone, Mr. Nichols and Mr. Greider. So, I don't know if counsel, how you all want to get together and, I see you two maybe want to get together and make sure it does exactly what you want it to do as well, so...
I mean, because either, either way, it has to get done. So I, I hope that people don't think that the work is just going to stop and nothing's going to happen, because something's definitely going to happen.
Okay.
For sure.
Yes, sir.
And I look forward to having a seventh councilperson here when we make that decision also.
Yes, sir. Alright, so postpone to May first. Little bit more conversation by not a quorum of council members to make sure everyone, it's doing exactly what they believe, so... Alright, number two.
Mr. Mayor.
This is Mr. Nichols.
I'd like to make a motion to receive file and consider and pass for the first time an ordinance amending the City of Waterloo Code of Ordinances by repealing section five, Exceptions and Variances to Chapter Five, Noise Control Title Four, Public Health and Safety, and enacting in lieu thereof a new section five, Exceptions and Variants of Chapter Five, Noise Control Title Four, Public Health and Safety.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. We had a conversation, oh no. Anyone have questions about this noise variance? Kelly, you want to just mention a little bit, or is counsel?
I just have, go ahead, Kelly, I just have a thing I wanted to say.
Oh, sure, um, yeah, I guess, so... Let's see, sorry, my mind's blinking. We had a work session on this at our last council meeting. Essentially, what this ordinance does is it helps to streamline better the noise variance process. Most of our noise variances are used in conjunction with backyard parties, get-togethers, block parties, things like that. What we've noticed since switching to two meetings per month, a lot of times, the noise... the noise variance isn't always on the top of a resident's mind. They'll come on a Thursday to apply for noise variance for an event that's gonna happen on a Friday, and council doesn't get together to meet until Monday. Sometimes we don't have time to get together, a special session to approve that variance. So what this, um, ordinance change will do is alter the process slightly so that instead of having the council convene to approve the noise variance, it will be, um, approved by the mayor's office, um, and it will also be reviewed by the police department, which is happening currently, the police department is always very involved with our noise variances, but it'll just help to streamline, uh, the process for residents.
All right, Mr. Bozen, you have a question?
Well, I just, yeah, yes, sir, it's really not a question, but my, my only issue with this is that currently, uh, after it's vetted by the police department, it comes before the council and is placed on the council agenda, and people can actually see that there's a noise variance been applied for, for a certain event. And with, by going to this, I don't believe the public will have that, and there's a section in there that says that the public has a right to appeal if, if they disagree with having that noise variance, but I don't even know how they would know that there is one, uh, since we don't have it on the, on our, on our council agenda. I know in the past, we've had special meetings and on a Friday, because we had an event downtown and, and the event organizer, who's organized events in the past, just didn't turn the paperwork in, and we had to have a special meeting to do it. And I, I don't want, I don't want this to be geared around that, I, I, I really think that the public should have the information in front of them when, when they have something that's gonna affect their neighborhood, and I don't think they have that information now, so I, I can't support this, but thank you.
Mr. Mayor, would there be an opportunity to, um, have as a part of this, or maybe amendment, that, um, we can include notification, um, to, um, notification to neighbors, or I guess, uh, something that, that people would get a direct notification with this approval?
Um, I guess as far as neighborhood notification goes, um, with the, um, process for holding a block party or having like a street closure for an event like that, for example, um, the person who's hosting the party is supposed to be getting in contact with their neighbors and letting them know that this street is gonna be blocked off for this purpose and during this timeframe. So, and as part of, if you have amplified sound with that, your neighbors are gonna be made aware that there's something going on in the neighborhood. Um, we can add in some additional requirements with the form itself that people talk to their neighbors, um, prior to applying for and getting the approval. Um, but if, it would only do that as, if that is something that the rest of the council wants to see as well. Um, and then as far as events that happen in Waterloo, um, a lot of times those events are coming to council for other things such as, uh, liquor licenses, for example. Um, and events downtown are very well advertised throughout the community as well. So I think there is some awareness, um, but we're open to tweaking the process to however council sees fit, because I think that the ultimate goal is to make this easier for residents to host and plan parties, which helps to boost our neighborhoods and boost morale within our community.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Um, this is something that, uh, I said it this last time, this is something that we're already doing, we're just putting policy into, or practice into policy, correct?
Yep, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this item? You'd probably say, um, maybe on this one, it would be one not to suspend the rules, um, and so that if anyone else comes forward or anything like that, um, uh, but I would probably say the next reading, we probably want to move forward, because it's that time of the year coming up here pretty soon, so. Um, so to, um, the noise variance, um, uh, roll call vote, counsel? All right, we have, uh, five yeses, and, uh, we have Mr. Bozen with the nay. All right, so that carries, uh, next emotion, suspend the rules?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second, uh, this may be one, we probably want to wait, but, um, Madam, I mean, uh, counsel, please, uh, vote for a suspension of the rules. And that is a... Mr. Childs will wait, no, all right, so that are, uh, six nays, so, uh, we'll pick this up next week. If you hear any questions or concerns from, uh, citizens, make sure you reach out to the clerk's office and, uh, let them know. Uh, we have one other, uh, two other items of business, uh, we have other council business, could someone read that one? Oh, it's a hearing on order assessing civil penalty to West Side Liquor, uh, nine nineteen West Fifth Street, Waterloo, Iowa five oh seven oh two, and assessing civil penalty in the amount of three hundred dollars.
Martin Peterson, Legal Department. Under about, uh, Friday, January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, at approximately, uh, fourteen, fifty-four hours, officers from the Waterloo Police Department conducted tobacco compliance check with regard to a business located at nine nineteen West Fifth Street, Waterloo, West Side Liquor. This is the time and the place for, uh, a hearing with regard to a violation of the state's tobacco laws, specifically an employee providing tobacco product to persons underage pursuant to Iowa Code, Section four fifty-three A point two one. Is anybody here from West Side Liquor tonight? A citation was issued to an employee, um, in case number STA zero two two seven two eight seven in Blackhawk County District Court. Uh, that employee, um, there was a judgment entered, um, with regard to that citation, and a fine in the amount of a hundred thirty-five dollars was imposed. That triggers a, uh, civil action, and that's what today is for, for an additional three hundred dollar fine directly to the business, and so we would ask that, um, the, at the conclusion of the hearing, which I think is now, you conclude, uh, that the violation has occurred, and you impose the civil penalty in the amount of three hundred dollars. Thank you, any questions?
So is that a, is that their first, first violation?
It was, their first offense, yes.
And, um, so we don't have to take any action because they're not here, right?
Uh, right, but I think, I think, uh, a vote to, um...
Yeah, we have to make a, a motion to impose the penalty.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh...
...impose the penalty.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second to impose a three hundred dollar penalty. Uh, counsel, uh, roll call vote. All right, um, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You, you sure aye? Uh, all opposed? All right, so the ayes have it, there is a civil penalty that's imposed. Mr. Mayor, pro tem.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session uh, for the purchase of real estate pursuant to Iowa Code, Section twenty-one point five one J.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Uh, Mr. Attorney, are we doing that, uh, improper?
Yes.
So we are doing that improper. Um, that is, uh, all in favor to adjourn the executive session?
I gotta do a roll call, actually.
Well, he closed his computer, they closed their computers.
I'll do a verbal one. Um, Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Right, we are adjourned to executive session, uh, sorry for the wait, everyone, uh, May first. Uh, we will, uh, bring this back up, and please contact, uh, council members with regards to, uh, questions you may have.